We city council meeting, this time I'll call the meeting to order. And we have our invocation tonight Pastor Marvin Taylor from Outreach for Jesus. Pastor Marvin, thank you for being here.
Trying to get up here, I got stuck in the chair. It it it's an honor to be here this evening. I was looking up a few things, try to kind of figure out what we need to pray for and might need to say. Well, I didn't find a whole lot of stuff worthy of repeating. I saw where a lot of city councils were, they were just having a big old arguments and this and that and the other, some about even praying. And I said, I'm sure thankful that y'all acknowledged that we need prayer. And I'm thankful for our town and and our county that we all recognize we need prayer. And I appreciate this opportunity. Let us pray. Oh mighty God, we we do realize we need direction. And your word said in all of our ways, acknowledge you and you direct our path. And so Lord, I truly pray you'll give the wisdom and knowledge. May not be some great discussions going on tonight. But we realize each and everything is very important in its own way. And Lord, I just pray for that wisdom and that understanding. I pray for our town, Lord. I'm I'm proud to be part of Hamlet and been here near all my life. And Lord, I I'm just so thankful, but Lord, it seems like in this day we need a few blessings. And Lord, if you can send some industries and some business along, we kind of sure appreciate it. And Lord, let us be wise stewards at each and everything that we do and give you praise and give you glory. Lord, we pray that you'll just build hedge of protection around our community that that protect us from any kind of sickness or viruses that may come around. We can trust in you, Lord, for you didn't give us a spirit of fear, but power, love and sound mind. Now may your blessings be on this meeting tonight. We ask in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Um council, you have before you tonight the agenda for tonight's meeting. There's been a request by Mr. Morpheus to add under item thirteen A, a closed session. Uh under general statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, A three and six. For attorney-client privilege and personnel matters. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Make a motion, we accept the agenda with the amendment.
Okay. And I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ours likewise. Uh council, you have before you the uh regular closed session minutes for February the eleventh of twenty twenty. Uh what are your wishes on that?
We move to approve.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Ours likewise. At this time, we come to item number five, which is comments from attendees. Do we have anyone here tonight that wishes to make any kind of presentation to the city council that's not otherwise on the agenda? Okay, if not, we'll close the comments from attendees. And at this time, moving on to new business, item number six is uh if Ms. Abby Covington would come forward. And the city clerk will administer the oath of office as a council member.
Okay, we ready? Aye.
May I repeat your name?
Aye, Abby Covington.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support?
That I will support.
And maintain the constitution?
And maintain the constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the constitution?
And the constitution.
Of the state of North Carolina?
Of the state of North Carolina.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
As a council member?
As a council member.
So help me God. Anybody want to take pictures?
Hey Peanut. Can't believe you didn't have anything to say Peanut.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be here. Thank you all for your gracious.
Put that light on. I want to be able to hear you.
That's all right. I just wanted to say I'm very happy to be here. I'm excited about this opportunity and looking forward to doing good things. And let's roll. Get it on.
Counsel, the last meeting, we discussed the alleyway next to the old bank building between Arlo's and the bank building about being able to close it. And uh we have a resolution of intent tonight that we need to uh pass. That's uh whereas general statute one sixty-eight two ninety-nine authorizes the Hamlet City Council to close public streets and alleys and whereas the Hamlet City Council considers it advisable to conduct a public hearing for the purpose of giving consideration to the closing of an alleyway off Champlain Street that dead ends at one fourteen West Main. Therefore, be it resolved by the Hamlet City Council that a meeting will be held at seven P M. on the fourteenth day of April two twenty 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 at Hamlet City Hall to consider a resolution closing an alleyway off Champlain Street that dead ends at one fourteen West Main Street. The city clerk is hereby directed to publish this resolution of intent once a week for four successive weeks in the daily journal or other newspaper of general circulation in the area. The city clerk is further directed to transmit by registered or certified mail to each owner of property abutting upon that portion of said street, a copy of this resolution of intent. The city clerk is further directed to cause adequate notices of this resolution of intent. And the scheduled public hearing to be posted is required by general statute one sixty-eight dash two ninety-nine. Uh counsel, what are your wishes on this resolution?
Make a motion, we approve it.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. I have a second. Is there any further?
I'd like to, what would it would at any way hinder public when by permanently closing it, the use of it? Is it used for any, for by the citizens for any reason? I don't know of any personally. I'm just asking the question.
It's just been there forever.
Been there forever, I know, and that would it would it.
It goes to private property, there's nothing uh.
Right, and that would be the purpose of the public hearing.
Wouldn't this be the purpose of the public hearing?
Yeah, it wasn't just, it wouldn't deter the public at all.
No, okay, that's, I just had that question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ours likewise. Thank you. The next item of business is a temporary closing from Richmond County Schools. I don't know how many people know where Park Street is, right behind Fairview Heights School. And we have a letter, I have a letter. Signed by Mr. Jeff Maples and was requested by Mr. Jerry Etheridge on the school board. See if I can find a copy of that. It's here somewhere. All right, thank you. And uh it says, dear Mr. Bayless, Fairview Heights School would like to close Park Street at the baseball fence and over to the fence up to uh Woodlawn Street. This would be done from eight thirty in the morning to two thirty in the afternoon, Monday through Friday, uh while school is open. Uh Mr. Eddie McDonald, the P E coach, would set up temporary roadblocks and then remove them. This will assure the safety of students going from the school to the ball field across Park Street. And the school would notify parents of this change. And uh it would be open again by two thirty in the afternoon, so the people that are going to pick up children and that go down that route will not have, be not, not be impaired. Um counsel, what are your wishes on this? I'm open for discussion.
It's all about the safety of the children, I understand that. And they go across and it's uh used the old Pony League Park that belonged to this thing. I don't, I don't really see the need for it. I mean, if they, if they're going out there and they're gonna use it to, as a playfield, surely the uh the school has adult supervision to come by and escort the children to and from. It's about thirty feet. Uh looks like, I just estimated it. I don't uh, I don't see, I don't really personally, I mean, I'm forty for the safety of the children. And I understand the limits of it and picking it back up, but I don't understand. Surely they go, there's, there's adult supervision, you've got teachers out there that can escort the children to and from.
Then what else, got any comments on it?
So the only purpose was to get to and from the field, it's not.
Yeah, they uh they use the field over there, I guess, pretty much during the day, all day long, and they go back and forth. Their classes across uh Park Street.
They use it for physical education in the playground area, is what they use it for. And if, and if there's a teachers out there and adults uh uh escorting to and from, I don't see the, I don't see the need.
Is there a fence on the Park Street side?
There is. Once they cross, once they cross Park Street.
There's a gate.
There's a gate there and it's fenced on both sides.
And they go straight across the street, the gate, they go into the ball field over there.
Into another fenced area.
There's nothing for the city to do? They're gonna open, close it to two thirty?
That's right, the city's not gonna be responsible for it, they are.
There's no houses in that section.
No, there's nothing there but the ball fields. That's right.
There's a way to get around on either side.
And and I'm sure they got to feed people that that is taking the children to and from the uh uh exercise field, P E field. By putting barricades up there, blocking it off, just creates more work and more problem.
You've got teachers there with them anyway.
That's right, you got teachers with them and by putting the barricades and stopping it, uh just creates another issue to deal with.
I think it, you know, the people, it's likely to impact most of the people who live on that street and go back and forth as a matter of habit from one side to the other. And I think their inputs, who we need to solicit input from.
Mm-hmm.
They're the people likely to be most inconvenienced by this.
There's very little traffic down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, other than the people that live in the neighborhood.
And it, and it said it would come back and be opened up on the weekends if the school uh is out for the summer breaks. I just don't see the need for this.
Is there some way we could notify the property owners or send a letter and get their, find out how they felt about it?
Absolutely, and the city attorney and I were just speaking that on a temporary basis, we can allow them to put cones up, but for this to be more permanent, we would need to do an ordinance
Right.
to either say that we're going to temporarily allow the permanent closure of the street during these times. So we could postpone it until April, advertise and then give the public more of an input.
More information.
Absolutely.
Well, I had several calls when the rumor got around or the word got around about it, uh not ten, but more than five. And uh requesting that uh not to close it, close it off, so.
Well, could we uh, could we just do a motion just to table this until something further comes along rather than?
I'll make a motion, we table it till we get more information. I'll make a motion, we table it.
Got a motion to table this. Yeah, he's gonna go ahead and do this. We're gonna research it, but then we'll, once we get everything together, we'll bring it back. Is that all right? Good, okay. Did I get a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Ours likewise. Thank you. Counsel, you have before you tonight, uh the approval for tax releases. What are your wishes on those?
Make a motion, we approve the tax release. That's red.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Ours likewise.
Can we go back to the last thing about this, this street, street closing?
Yeah.
Could we request that they give us a little more reasoning to why they want to do it? Has there been any issues? Has there been any problems or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of. The only request I got, I got Mr. Jerry Etheridge on the school board approaching me about it. And I told him that he would have to get with the uh school and they would have to come up with some issues and it would have to be open by two thirty, regardless of anything else.
Why are you collecting information? Just collecting information from them, just to see if they've had any specific issues that weren't mentioned in the letter.
Sure, and I'd be glad to invite them to speak at the April meeting too, if they'd like to give a little further justification.
Mister Mayor, I just, I discussed, I asked Eddie Martin, did he go to school over there and how long the school been there? He said he went to school there. And I asked him, how long has it been there? He said forever.
At least twenty years.
And I asked him about the ball field, how long did the ball field been there? And I remember when Mr. Nelson White was very active and probably got a park built. I don't know of any incident, and he doesn't either, of anything ever happening to be in an unsafe place. Because there's speed bumps there to start with.
I would still want to ask them if there is any.
And he comes back and said, well, I didn't say he didn't. But he uh uh, he'd come back and he, they got speed bumps, you know, in three different places.
Yeah, they've been there forever.
And they are, and and most people that come by, when I've been down there in the ball program for years and whenever they come by, they always were. They never saw an excessive speed or they were always very careful.
They take a drive carriage out and want the car.
Thank you for checking on that, John.
Absolutely, that's great.
Uh let's, look at item number ten, we need to come up with a date to do our budget work session. And uh we will have to do it probably either this month or next month, right?
Right.
We've got to have this set, to vote on and then have it to finalize in June.
Sure. As long as we can get it in before the regularly scheduled, uh scheduled April city council meeting, we should be in pretty good shape. Jill and I are gonna be working with department heads over the next few weeks to hammer out the, the minor issues under five thousand dollars in their line items. And then just bringing capital expenses, large projects over five thousand dollars to council for consideration. So it's really uh at your flexibility when you all are available to meet.
You say you'd like probably toward the end of March or the first, first week in April before the uh board meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm about open.
I'm out of town to twenty thirty.
I'm pretty open.
Are you looking over uh?
I'm, I'm pretty open.
Sir?
I'm pretty open.
Oh, okay.
Do y'all do this in the afternoon or morning or night or when?
Afternoon usually.
We usually start in the morning and then morning, usually around eight thirty.
Monday through Friday or week?
Yes, ma'am, we've typically done Monday through Friday, but it's a flexibility of whenever you all can meet.
Okay.
So you want to start what, around nine o'clock in the morning?
That'd be fine.
The thirtieth or the thirty-first?
Monday or Tuesday?
Yeah, Monday or Tuesday, I think it was that good. Monday or Tuesday, thirtieth or thirty-first?
We don't want to do it Friday at five o'clock.
Okay.
We want to say the thirty-first at nine A M.
Well, Abby was checking. You okay?
I've got a meeting at seven thirty that morning, but I'll be through. I'll be dressed at nine A M.
So you're saying what date, the thirty-first? Is that right? Tuesday? Okay, thirty-first. At nine A M.
What day does that follow?
Tuesday.
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 Mm-hmm. Get everybody on board, that's great. Tuesday the thirty-first at nine A M. Okay, we'll move along to uh city manager's report, item number eleven.
Thank you so much, Mister Mayor. I just want to get started, as many of you are tonight, to uh thank Ms. Covington. They often say a picture is worth a thousand words, and I found this while doing some research. And this was shortly after you were sworn in your first term on city council in November of nineteen seventy-five, if I'm correct, Ms. Covington. So I think that says.
Everybody in that picture is deceased but me.
Whoa, no, 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 Tommy's.
That's why I said it, everybody on that council is deceased.
And I think that says everything, that we have someone that's experienced, that knows the happenings around the city and that's willing to serve. I greatly thank you, Ms. Covington, and certainly look forward to working with you. I've made this speech several times over the last few years. But certainly thanks to you, thanks to your family and your friends for sharing you with us, and I am looking forward to the days and weeks ahead, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Also, uh there are a few items that I want to make the public and council aware of tonight. Uh first of all, baseball registration is going to continue through this month. If you would like to register, by all means, please come to city hall and we will get you taken care of and squared away. Also, on a different note, we were able to get Mr. Gene Ross's train installed down at the tornado building. It looks great down there. We've got a lot of compliments from that, and it's certainly going to be an asset and something to bring people that have been to the depot museum complex before back and to bring newcomers to the tornado building. So certainly appreciate council's cooperation and their um, their support of that project. I am very glad to see that uh come to a conclusion and very glad to have Mr. Ross's train down at our uh tornado building. Also, before we meet again, Easter will have come and gone, so I want to make note that we will be closed on April tenth for Good Friday, and of course, wish everyone a happy Easter. Also, if you've been around town lately, you've noticed that there's some color down towards the city lake and some arts and culture. Mrs. Kay Cavendish and Tim Nevenger have had several pieces of art installed down there. They look great. We've got lots of positive feedback and lots of questions and everyone wanting to know what that is, but all positive and all uh very supportive of the project. It looks great down there. Appreciate what you guys are doing there at the point and for uh getting those pieces installed. Thank you all so much. Also, on that same note, the fountain is back up and going at the city lake for a short period of time. We had some power failure, power issues down there, but we got that taken care of late yesterday afternoon. So we are back in business with the fountain at the city lake. Also, I've been in touch with the playground company and the uh company that has been hired to restore the caboose. I'd hope that we'd have had a little more progress on both of those projects so far, but the weather and the wet winter has put us a bit behind. That playground is of course in part for the foundation with Carolinas, Cole Foundation, and uh the caboose also under those grants. So we're looking forward to getting those taken care of and want to thank everyone that came out to our community meeting at the city lake to discuss the project. We had a good turnout, several council members there, a good discussion, a good dialogue with a lot of fresh new ideas and certainly looking forward to moving forward with that project. Also, an update, last month, council moved forward with the demolition of um the property on Washington Avenue. We are slated to take that property down the week of March twenty-third, so that will be in about two weeks. Mr. George Gostick's going to be the contractor removing that property, taking that house down, so that will certainly be a um, an eyesore taken care of and money well spent. I'm excited to see that taken care of, and I know after many personal conversations with people in that neighborhood at uh the Monroe Avenue Avenue Community, they are also excited to uh see that property taken down. And just one last thing tonight uh for council's consideration. I sent out an email earlier fulfilling a request that Councilman Sellers had asked about with uh some attorney bills and also for some check registers. Glad to provide any information to any of you, any member of the public, any former elected official or anyone that would like this information. But I did want to get a little guidance on how you all want to move forward with this in the future. Uh in the past, if a council member has brought a request to me, I've sent it out to all of council, as so to promote transparency, to make sure that no one's blindsided with one member having information and another does not. So I sent it in electronic format earlier today, but I believe Mr. Sellers wanted it in hard copy and I wanted to see if any of you wanted it in hard copy, if we wanted to stick with the public records policy with moving forward with hard copy and just kind of gauge your interest on that. Glad to ob- uh oblige, glad to give out anything that I can under the law. I just wanted a little guidance on that from, from council.
I'll answer that one for myself. Only, I'd like the hard copy and I'd like a, I'd like a copy of it, a monthly copy of it, in, in hard copy.
And that's the check rest, register, Mr. Sellers?
Yes, that's the check register.
Okay. And the attorney bills as well or?
As, that's correct.
Okay.
How many pages is that?
Roughly, the check register for twenty nineteen was about eighty pages, and then the attorney bills for the last three months were around twelve, fifteen pages.
How much time did it take for the staff to compile that?
Uh it's a ma- well, twenty nineteen was a little more tedious because it's split between two fiscal years. From January one twenty nineteen to June thirtieth twenty nineteen, we were operating in fiscal year eighteen nineteen. So those records were not as readily available as opposed to the records that have been compiled since June one twenty nineteen in the nineteen twenty fiscal year. So it's a matter of compiling those uh, the reports from our software system for the check register, which we've done in the past. That's really been at the discretion of council and individual members as to whether you wanted the check register. So um that's just a matter of compiling a report each month and continuing to send it, and then the attorney bills come in, of course, on a, on a monthly basis.
Do we have a policy for um large records requests like this?
We have a public records form, and I have it right here, uh Ms. Covington, that uh requires name, address of the person requesting, uh we're uh indicating what they're requesting, whether they want to inspect the records, whether they want printed copies or electronic files. There are fees that are assessed in here. For example, if you want a DVD or cassette of a meeting, that's a dollar and fifty cents. Copies are typically ten cents a page that we charge, and then we have um, and a line item where you can put a more detailed description of what you're looking for. And then a reason for a request is optional. We certainly don't have to, don't have to require that. But that's the current policy that we have, that we have in place that we've abided by, uh at least since I've been here.
But when you get a records request for a document that ends up being over a hundred pages, does that adequately reflect at ten cents a page, the cost that you have invested in getting all that together?
Yes, ma'am, I know there's some strict guidelines about what you can and can't charge, and it has to be, it has to be the exact cost of what it costs us from the material, I believe, if that's right.
Is it material cost that you cover? No involvement of staff?
I don't believe you can.
Yeah, the manager's, the manager's correct. Um it basically says actual cost, and that's the cost of, of the materials. So you know, if it costs you five cents to make the copy, that's what you charge. Ten's a very common number. There is an exception, and I'm paraphrasing here, for extraordinary use of administrative or clerical staff or I T resources. Like if someone wants a, a weird database or something.
Right.
Then you can have a special service charge, but for just a garden variety request, like uh, like the one Mr. Sellers has made, um the, the guidance we get from the school government is that's just part of the workflow of, of the staff that handles that.
Okay.
So really, two issues on the table. Number one, do you all want it in hard copy each month, provided to you? And then number two, how do you want me to handle similar requests in the future?
I would say for the, for the city's sake, unless someone is, unless someone is requesting, or that person that's requesting it, I certainly wouldn't want hard copy. I, I would love the soft copy. I don't want.
You can send it to me digitally.
Yeah, I can print mine off at the house.
I'd like the hard, I'd like the hard copy. If there's any expense in it, I'll, I'll incur the expense. You can bill me.
Okay. Those are the only formal matters I have for council's consideration tonight. Appreciate your time.
We'll move along to comments from council, and I'll give opportunity to Ms. Covington.
So far, I don't have anything. Just like I said, I'm looking forward to it.
Mister Stewart?
Um I'll say it, I always say every meeting, please, please, out there in uh Facebook land and Hamlet land, please come to our city council meetings. Please know what's going on in the city. Thank you to Pastor Marvin for that wonderful prayer. Ms. Covington, thank you for serving again. Um you're the real M V P from nineteen seventy-five, so thank you so much.
M V P or artifact?
Baseball registrations, y'all know me, about the youth, you know, if, if you can even sponsor a child, you know, we encourage that. But please encourage, um I'll use to sign up for baseball, you know, not even just for sports, but it's great for the activity and the bodies and all that great stuff. And then the last thing, of course, you know, we've been hearing it all over the, all over everywhere, coronavirus, you know, washing our hands in the city and using sanitizers and all that great stuff. And Mister City Manager, whatever we're doing with the city, um if you just keep us posted, if, if anything comes up with that, but thank you. But thank you all so much.
Mr. Martin?
Well, as has been stated before, congratulations to Ms. Covington. I look forward to serving with you on this board and I'm, I'm satisfied you would be a very valuable member.
Thank you. I hope to be.
That's all I have.
Mr. Sellers?
As to do, I, again, I'd like to reiterate the fact that Abby, I'd be glad to serve on the board with you. We've been on a few boards over at the church, but when, in years, years passed, probably about the time that photo was given there, nineteen seventy-five. But anyway, uh, thanks for caring for the city of Hamlet. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Is that all? So, Mr. McQueen?
Same thing, uh, just thank you for expressing an interest, um, have someone that's got the experience and the knowledge and just jump right in and be ready to take off from day one. That's, that's great. Um, look forward to serving with you again. This will be our second time. And, uh, just appreciate everything you've done and everything you will do.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I guess down to manage comments. Uh, Ms. Covington, again, uh, we're glad to have you with us. Great serving with you again. We've, uh, always done well and looking for great things to happen. Uh, I hope everybody has a wonderful, uh, Easter and, uh, if the weather turns on us a little bit, we'll at least have a few days of sunshine to go along with the rain. But, uh, other than that, that's all I have tonight. Um, this time I would ask for a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion that we go into closed session?
Have a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Thank you. We will go into closed session. Okay, we're in open session at this time. Uh, we did not take any votes on any matter. All we have is some updates from the, uh, uh, attorney and so at this point, unless there's further ado, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sue.
I have a motion.
Second.
Got a second. All in favor say aye. Pose likewise.